I will call a meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Casey, blurring in my ear. Jackie, how are you today? Would you please read the minutes from last meeting?
Good morning. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, January 9, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny, Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Megan Comeroy, County Administrator, Jennifer Dinklow, Assistant County Administrator, and Jabalun Dinkbacher, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of December 19, 2013, with the following correction, quote, "Civil action." David detailed plaintiff versus Donnie Tenny, Creed Pletcher, and J.C. Rafferty, Timothy P. Stranko, and the Upshur County Commission defendants. Donnie Tenny recommended J.C. Rafferty to serve as the Commission President for the 2014 calendar year. Troy Brady nominated Donnie Tenny to serve as Commission President. Mr. Kenny respectfully declined the nomination and moved to elect J.C. Rafferty as President for the coming year. J.C. Rafferty accepted the nomination. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved J.C. Rafferty to serve as Commission President for the 2014 calendar year. Note, Donnie Tenny and J.C. Rafferty. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the time of the Upshur County Commission meeting to be held weekly on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the hours of operation for the courthouse this Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The following exceptions will apply. Friday, April 18, 2014, close all day. Friday, May 6, 2014, close at noon. Friday, December 19, 2014, close at noon. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the 2014 calendar year holidays as submitted. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the Commissioner appointments to the various boards as follows, and that's as listed. David Kaufman, Upshur County Sheriff, appeared before the Commission and made a request to hire a temporary officer for a 90-day period of employment at the rate of $16 per hour. After discussion, action was deferred to a future meeting pending clarification of budgetary concerns and to obtain lawful advice concerning questions regarding the eligibility of candidates. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the resignation of Sheriff McDaniel since part-time Upshur County Commission Administrative Assistant effective December 2013. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign documentation which authorizes the office of the Upshur County Assessor and/or the West Virginia State Tax Department, Property Tax Division, to correct valuations for real property, personal property, and/or mineral accounts. Any adjustments made after January 30, 2014 must be forwarded to the Commission sitting as Board of Review and Equalization and with an effective date of January 9, 2014 through the date of adjournment of the Board of Review and Equalization. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the recommendation for the removal of Tina K. Miller-Jones as executive trix of the estate of Vincent Miller, deceased, and the appointment of the Sheriff of Upshur County as the administrator of the estate. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved and authorized the President's assignment grant contract and related documents with the West Virginia Development Office for Community Participation Grant 13, LEDAs, or SO-13 in the amount of $8,000. The grant benefits Disabled American Veterans Chapter 13 and funds will be used for the purpose of making improvements to the facility. Carrie Jo Bennett, Flood Plane Manager, appeared before the Commission and provided an updated life status report on flood plane issues concerning spill projects as discussed at June 6, 2013, and November 21, 2013, Upshur County Commission meetings. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from the Upshur County Board of Education concerning the appointment of Dr. Cam's samples to the Upshur County Cards and Recreation Advisory Board. The samples replaces Ford Memorial and Suter with a term expiration of June 30, 2015. Correspondence, number two, correspondence from Dominion Resources Services Incorporated concerning pipeline safety and digging information. Number three, building permit report, December 2013. Number four, Upshur County Communications Center reports, December 2013, as listed. Number five, agendas and/or notices of meetings, as listed. Number six, meeting minutes and/or five minutes reports, as listed. Number seven, Board of Equalization Interview Schedule, as listed. Number eight, meetings, as listed. Number nine, appointments needed or upcoming, as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The Commission approved the following examinations and/or refunds, as listed. The Commission approved the following request for time out of office for Commission employees, as listed. The Commission approved the following request to attend meeting for Commission employees, as listed. The Commission recessed at 11:30 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 1:00 p.m. Steve Lynn Herring, 911 Communications Center Director, appeared before the Commission and provided an updated life status report on scapping and personnel issues. Lisa Under, former E-911 Communications Center dispatcher, approved report from the Commission and provided an exit interview. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission meeting adjourned at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Other additions or corrections to the minutes, Ms. Red?
I may we approve, Red.
So moved, approved by vote. Okay. Next, on moving on, we have a 9:30 appointment with Cara Tustin from the Location Rehab Specialist with the VA Medical Center. We have 15 minutes yet before that, so we can have some items for discussion, action, or approval. We will engage in discussion and approval of advertising for the Upshur County Commission Administrative Assistant vacancy. We've had a number of individuals in that position over the last several months. It was a part-time position without benefit, but we have decided to advertise that position with benefits. And I would move or request that a motion be made to authorize that solicitation advertisement.
So moving, I would comment that we have budgeted, and this year's budget, we have budgeted for benefits for that. So the only additional expense would be the five additional hours a week, and since that's been vacant for so long, there's no problems. Whoever, they have enough money in the budget to fund that with the remainder of the year.
Thank you. Okay. Troy taking a vote on that, so that's, is our motion, is our motion accepted?
I'll second it.
Second item for discussion or for vote is resignation of Virgil P. Miller, Chief Deputy of Administration, effective December. It says December 30th, but I think his letter, I thought was December 31st. Yes, he has December 31st in his letter. I have a motion to accept that resignation.
Accept.
And I'll second it, and so it is approved. Retirement of Christine Smith, Upshur County Housekeeping, effective April 18, 2014. I have a motion to accept Ms. Smith's resignation, retirement.
Have we received official letters or just discovered? I didn't see anything.
She had written a letter the other day to me advising that it's her last day with the employees.
I have a motion to accept. I'll second it. Passed. But I would like to comment that she has done an exceptional job, I believe, in her duties, very reliable and dependable, and she will be best up here. I know Greg has commented many times the quality work that she's done, and we will be advertising, I believe we'll discuss replacement options in the future. Moving on, we have a request from the magistrate clerk's office to employ a worthless check. I always hate the term, we're employing a worthless check clerk. We're given worthless checks, not definition of the clerk herself as being worthless or herself as being worthless. But they have recommended that an employee be hired. They recommended an individual by the name of Sean Young to be hired effective January 21, 2014, at the rate of $10 an hour, to be working 19 and 1/2 hours or less per week. I have a motion to approve that request.
I'll second it.
So it has passed. Okay. Moving down, we have some items for your information. We have a Lewis Upshur Animal Patrol Cat Report, as Donnie likes to say sometimes, reflecting the number of cats out of death at the facility. We also have a dog ward report for December of 2013. Following that, we have correspondence from the West Virginia Development Office regarding the Elkins Road Public Service District request for Phase III Water System Improvement Project, which they signed a grant from the Small Cities Block Grant, and the purpose of that communication was to indicate that, to regret to inform the Elkins Public Service District that they were unable to accommodate their request for funding for that Phase III project, setting forth that there are many individuals in public service districts requesting funding for such projects, but that they do not have funding sufficient to accommodate all public service districts in their request. They are, however, encouraging them to continue to seek resources needed to invest in infrastructure development, and that applications for the 2014 grant submission will be due May 21 of 2014 this year. Following that, we have a NACCO County Tracking Report for 2013, which is a study of assessing recovery patterns across the nation's county economies for the year 2013. And a review of that report specifically for Upshur County reflects some demographic For example, if I read these figures correctly and the chart correctly, if you have any comment, Mr. Tenny, you may also comment. For the year 2012, 2013, our economic output, that is the GDP, would be down 0.2 percent, 2 tenths of a percent from the previous year. The peak year from 1990 through the latest peak, which was 2013, would have been 3.1 percent. So you can see how this recession, this economic environment that we've operated in a number of years affecting the country nationally, also impacts on Upshur County to the point that we had a high GDP from 3.1, now we have it 0.2. So that impacts economics across the board. We have a jobs growth rate of 1.9, so that is an improvement over the 13-year peak of 1.3, so we've had 6 tenths improvement in employment. But again, that depends on the type of jobs, the quality of jobs that are being offered and being filled. So there has to be some understanding or review. We do not have that information here in front of us as to the quality of jobs. We know that mining, for example, jobs bring in, on average, I believe I had here, an average of average wage according to 2013 of $112,000. Did I read that correctly? Did you read that correctly? $112,300, average wage for mining. That doesn't seem to me accurate, but over the 12-year or 13-year period, maybe that...
It says the average wage, average wage of always $28,200.
For mining. But this is mining specifically, average wage, is $112,300. I don't know about, I question how that is determined. The median home prices reflected a growth in Upshur County of 12.2 percent, which is a phenomenal growth, but I've read that that appears to be the case across the border in the United States, and home purchases, home values are recovering. The 13-year peak prior to this was 5.5. That was the average from the 13-year period. So the home price has rebounded with the median, I don't see, we have a dollar figure here for the median value of the house.
I don't see that.
I don't see that. We don't know what that would be. Moving on, I think, we then have a West Virginia Regional Jail and Correctional Facility Authority statement for December, reflecting a bill for December of $53,654, which, if we historically look at the figure, is down around $4,000 from previous month, November, and down $5,000 from October, but is still higher than our average in the last several, of last year or so. But again, that reflects, if you read the newspaper, pay attention to the current news or reports, we have a number of issues that, again, unfortunately drugs and methamphetamine laboratories and whatever appear to still be an issue hardly a day goes by that the newspaper does not reflect in our area, not only Upshur County, but throughout the region, arrests for similar violations of law. And it is unfortunate, but we could not use that money, which we've discussed many times, that money could not be directed toward beneficial things in terms of the public. So we then have, following that, agendas, notices of meetings, meeting minutes, around five minutes before our scheduled speaker. Do you have any, anything to discuss?
Well, my report, I made my first visit on my newly appointed board to the Westmont High RC&amp;D Meeting, and that's a board that's made up of the West Fork, the Montgai, and the Tiger Valley, well, it used to be Salt Conservation District, now it's just Conservation Districts, because it's emphasis on conserving all of our natural resources. So it's actually, let's see, 17, 18 years ago, I served on the Tiger Valley Salt Conservation Board as a district supervisor, and now that's a, that's an elected position, that's on your ballot, and we have two good, two good district supervisors in Upshur County now serving on that, so, but they just talked about the different projects, and they have some grant money, and we received some in the past in Upshur County. I think we got some for the youth camp years ago, and Curry for a couple little projects. So there was a beekeeper there from Barbara County, it was very interesting, talking about the bee problems in West Virginia and across the nation, and, you know, anybody that's a little bit aware of the bee problem, there is mite that gets on the bees and has caused the death of thousands of bees, or millions probably, and so now she says what the problem is, there's a pesticide to kill that mite, but as is typical, and a lot of times, if it says to put one teaspoon per gallon, people think, well, one teaspoon's good, let's put three or four in. And so what's happened, the bees, the mites, because of the overuse, there's a buildup of viruses, there's such like 12 or 13 viruses now that are attacking the bees. So it's just, you know, in agriculture, it's, one, you solve one problem, you create another. But what was interesting is that she pointed out that a lot of people don't know is how critical pollinators are to food production, and there are actually people in West Virginia that ship bees to California in the wintertime to pollinate the conom trees, and then they ship them back, and they'll ship them somewhere up north to where the, when the apples are blooming, to pollinate them. There's such a shortage of bees, and most people think of honeybees, but as she pointed out, there's a lot of pollinators that I wasn't even aware of, that are pollinators, like hummingbirds, butterflies are pollinators, sweatbees are pollinators. Now, one thing that I always thought was a pollinator is yellow jackets, but they're not, so you can kill all those and you won't be hurting anything. Although I did hear comments this year of the lack of yellow jackets, because you know, usually in the fall, when fruit's racking and rotting, you see a lot of yellow jackets, and really wasn't a lot around, so I'm not sure, but since they're not pollinator. Well, one thing that they're encouraging people to do, doesn't matter if you live in town, if you live in the country, is to plant a little pollinator garden, and all you have to do is plant some flowers or something, something for the bees to, because what happens is, in, I think it's July and August, there's nothing for the bees to work. So what they're doing, they're using up all the reserve that they need to live through the winter. And so if you plant flowers, you plant, buckwheat's a good one, it keeps the deer out of it, something that's going to bloom like in July and August for the bees, then that will help maintain the bee, because if you don't have bees, you don't have any fruit, no vegetables, no apples, no oranges, no garden crops, no corn, nothing, if you don't have bees to pollinate. So it's very critical for our food production that we have pollinators. So there's going to be an effort to educate kids in school and to help promote, you know, pollinator gardens and pollinator homes. You can build a little home for bees to nest in, so, it's very interesting, I thought. It's an outstanding thing.
But it did, it did cause me pause. I mean, I know that you're horticulturist, you were assigned to that committee, gave me pause, and then had me draw a vote on that last week. No, I'm just teasing.
Well, there was confusion last year. We thought we appointed Buddy, but he, he didn't go any of the meetings, and I think it was because he wasn't aware that he was appointed, et cetera.
I mean...
But I, that's very interesting, because it goes back to your roots, you know, like you like investigation, I like...
Kara Tustin, 9:30 scheduled appointment is not here at this point, it is 9:30. I would recommend to take a short recess, having her arrival, then we can resume in five, 10 minutes.
Unless, let, maybe Carrie, yeah?
Unless we have other, unless we have other...
Do you have something, Carrie?
I do.
Okay.
I have a road name request that I want to present to the commission.
Why don't you come up here for a minute? That'll make them familiar with the process, in case somebody wants to name a road.
I have a road name request that has been established recently in Upshur County. It's out in the Queens area. Not sure if you're familiar with the location, but it's between the Land Cemetery Road and the Jackson Fork Road. It's a private driveway that goes up to a house and two camps. So it's owned by all one trustee, there's no other property owners involved, and I have a sign off on that, all the paperwork that I need in order to get a road name approved. And they have provided me with the name Thorpe Mountain Road that they would like to have approved. They shortened mountain to the abbreviation MTN versus spelling it out, which is probably what I would have recommended to them even before. The only thing that concerns me is they have it as a road, and it's 100% not a road. It's more of a driveway, it's a private driveway in fact. The third choice was Thorpe Mountain Lane that they put down. So I guess I'm presenting to you their requested road name of Thorpe Mountain Road as the road name of choice, and asking that if I can talk with them and possibly change the suffix to drive versus we need it as road. I would want to be, you know, have that flexibility to do that. At Thorpe Mountain, there is no conflict at all with any existing road names to get that approved, and in the process, I have two new structures that I need to get addressed off of it.
And would you, to space speaking, the family?
Yes, I have Mr. Thorpe's phone number. I'm going to call and speak with him after the meeting today to see what would be approved.
So we can put that on our agenda for next week?
You could, if you needed to, yep.
Sounds fine.
Okay.
Thank you. If you can contact them today.
Okay.
And make sure that's not a problem, then we can do that after a while. I mean, that's just ordinary course of events.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll call our meeting to recess, having arrival. Are you Kara Tustin?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, we won't go into recess then. Ms. Tustin, if you take the podium, identify yourself and the organization that you are representing to the press and to the viewing public. Appreciate it.
Yes, I'm from the VA Medical Center.
Make sure, can you hear her okay?
Is this my cooked up?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're on TV.
I'm TV, the viewing public.
Yeah, you'll be on CNN tonight, Fox News or something.
I'm on, I'll keep that out. I shouldn't like that.
Right.
I can't.
I can't.
You're a second. You're just on the local access.
Just local access channel. It's not, it's not live.
You're, you're, it's, just don't be nervous.
No, I, can I speak to Fox? Here.
I'll let you some there.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm just talking to the press. Due to circumstances certainly beyond the Commission's control, but not being aware of this prior to her appearance today, because of agency rules or regulations, Ms. Tustin cannot appear in a public forum to present her information, but can do so in a direct contact with the Commission. Is that correct? She won't even say, so I'll just nod her head. So we will accept that, and I will hold a recess, since we have 10 more minutes between now and the time of our next scheduled appointment. I'll go into recess, as we earlier had discussed, and during our recess, we can, with the Commission...
Is this, is this something that can go in the press as far as the information that you're going to present? Is that...
No, I'm sorry. Without, we have a public affairs officer that will have to be involved.
Okay, so it's just a matter of the protocol, it's not, I mean...
Information isn't sensitive or anything of that nature.
It's just because of your position that it has to be someone else that actually presents it to the public?
Oh, I would just have to have approval.
Oh, okay.
Okay, recognizing that, that would it be possible for you to return at a later date after you receive authority and permission to?
Possibly.
That we will defer your appearance before the Commission until a later date.
And basically, what you're going to talk about is just a service that's going to be provided for veterans...
Yes.
...as far as job-based opportunities. So it's, it's just a matter of government protocol that has to be followed, but it is, my understanding, it's a good program for veterans that helps businesses and promotes that, so...
Thank you, Ms. Tustin.
Thank you.
So when you get approval, just, just check back and we'll get you on the agenda, then you could publicly let everyone know the, the good program.
Benefits of the program. Thank you very much. We still have around eight minutes before our next scheduled appearance, so we will take that. It is now 9:45. I reconvene the...
Morning, news media.
I'm Jackie.
Hey, gentlemen, I'm here this morning, and the commission is fully aware that I've had some issues trying to find the right candidate to fill our law enforcement slot. I would like to announce today to you gentlemen that I believe I found that person. This gentleman is qualified, certified, he's a proven hard worker, he knows Upstate County like the back of his hand, and he probably knows 60% of the people in Upstate County by their first name. So today, I would like to ask you to honor my request in hiring Virgil D. Miller back as my chief deputy of administration. I didn't think this was an optional, I thought for certain Virgil was ready and wanted to go home and rabbit hunt and sit on the porch. But Virgil contacted me a short time ago, and he told me that he had second thoughts, and of course, whenever he advised me of that, we met, we talked about this position that I currently have available, and it didn't take myself long to come to the decision that Virgil was the man that I need. I think bringing Virgil back would be the best thing for the sheriff's department and for the people of Upstate County. I don't think we can offer any better resource at this time.
We've spoken with the county prosecutor for legal opinion, and you've also spoken with, I understand, Terry Rean of the civil service board.
That's true.
And they have authorized, in terms of legality, and accomplish this request within the confines of state statutes.
Exactly, Jason. They did not see any issue with moving forward on this request.
Well, I know that Megan Palmer, our administrative, county administrator, has also spoken with the prosecutor regarding this issue, and he has confirmed the same information you passed upon there.
And that's basically because this is a non-civil service position, chief deputy. That's the key element, is that you're...
Yes, sir.
You're right. So as I understand, of course, we, earlier today, we may be aware, we accepted Virgil's resignation effective December 31st, and subsequent to that, I know that the bookkeeper took steps to initiate the separation from employment. Virgil's accumulated annual leave had been paid out to you, as I understand it. So necessitate, partly, in order to go through this, necessitated basically for him to be rehired rather than just continue on from, from the December 31st date of resignation, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So I think you requested an effective date of January 17th, that would be tomorrow, I believe.
I'd like to have him back to work tomorrow morning, 7:00 a.m. He's got a busy day tomorrow.
Well, as a fact, if tomorrow, he could start at 12:01 tomorrow.
Well, the chief deputy, myself, would yet to sit down with Virgil and explain what his working hierarchy is.
Well, I know from last week, when you made the presentation on the other matter, that, of course, Commissioner Brady is not here today because of health issue that came up yesterday, and we knew he would not be here today, and he sends his regrets, because as, as you recall, last week, he had high praise for Virgil as deputy and as a sheriff, having worked with him in both of those capacities. So if he were here today, I can't speak for him, but I would anticipate he would be that way, but in any event, having received that request, does anyone move to approve that request? Do I have a...
Same with you. Ask him a couple seconds.
The drama, the drama was there. I'll second it. It is therefore approved. Congratulations, Virgil. Hope you enjoy your employment at Upstate County and your position.
Thank you. I just, two and a half weeks I've been off. Retirement's not for me, not yet.
Well, good, that's good for the people of Upstate County. So, thank you.
If it's all much longer with the rabbits left in Upstate County.
You want us to have news?
So gone today, here today.
Well, good.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll let you guys get back to work.
Almost ground, we can't, that's...
Okay, that completes our items on the agenda.
Make sure you get the...
I know that you have some financial issues to take care of, bills to pay, so there being no additional business unless you have any additional business.
They will pay the bills.
Okay, do I have anyone take a motion here, Chair?